Town of Midland will continue to hold its meetings virtually as an ongoing preventative measure in keeping with the recommendations of the Simpleskoka District Health Units, Medical Hospital of Health and in accordance with procedure by law twenty eighteen dash six two as amended. Residents are encouraged to watch the council meeting on Rogers TV cable fifty-three or via the Rogers TV link, which is on file can be found on our website base page. I'd also at this point like to read the traditional land acknowledgement, which is that the town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people, now known as the Chipewa Tri-council comprised of Bosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre-confederation treaty five and treaty sixteen and included within the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty-three. Town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory here on Wendat and the historic homelands of the Métis, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous individuals. I'll call a meeting to order and ask if there are any declarations of conflict of interest. I see none. Therefore, I have some motions, sorry. Having done the introductory remarks, I would ask everybody to join with me in a moment of silent reflection and perhaps give some thought to Councilor Hank Manegh's passing last week. He's a second term councillor with Bosley First Nation. Young man with a young wife and children dedicated to his community, well respected by all, and so really sad with that to to have to recognize his passing. So perhaps we can think about his family and and Councilman Egg's achievements. Thank you, Council. For the sake of for the for information for the public council met just a bit earlier this evening in a closed session to consider committee appointments. And the committee is now to rise and report. I have a motion to the effect from Councillor Post and Councillor Gordon, seconded by Councillor Gordon, that further to the verbal report of the deputy clerk and confidential criteria based matrix provided at the closed meeting session of council held October twenty-one, twenty twenty regarding committee appointments, council confirms the following, that Andreas Andreas Andy ought be appointed to the Community Hydro Distribution Advisory Committee, that Margaret Hamlin, Sonia Lattiser, and Michelle Billick be appointed to the Homelessness Action Committee, that all appointments shall be for a term consistent with the term of council. That administration continue to recruit for vacant board and committee appointments. Council, you've heard the motion. Any comments or questions with regard to that? Councillor Gordon?
Thanks. I'm always happy to see people apply for our committees, some of the especially like the hydro one. We've had a vacancy on in a long time. So, you know, shout out and appreciation, especially for such an applicant with so much experience. For our new homelessness action committee, I was, you know, absolutely moved that we've had six applicants for four positions right out of the gate without even having to do any begging. And all six of them were fantastic applicants. And so I don't want to, and I want to remind people the terms of reference allows this committee to engage people, even if you're not officially part of the committee. We're going to be engaging with anybody, including a couple of these other applicants throughout the mission of this committee. Just you don't have to be on the committee and have a vote and just officially be on the committee to have a say and the ability to leverage anybody with ideas who wants to help solve and deal with the homelessness issues in our community will be welcome. So I just I don't want anybody who who applied who wasn't successful to feel discouraged by this. Your input is valued and you will be welcomed. And we'll make sure that the links for these meetings as they start to happen are made public. And people are feel free to join just exactly like we do here. Obviously, we have to have some control around that with, you know, for voting and the procedural side of it. But again, a warm thanks to the applicants, and I'm really looking forward to this committee getting off the ground in short order. So kudos to to volunteers. We couldn't do without you.
Thank you, Councillor. So any further comments or questions on this matter? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries. Next on our agenda, we have a motion by Councillor Downer, seconded by Councillor Cunningham, that the contents of the regular council with closed session agenda for October twenty-one, twenty twenty be approved as amended. First amendment being notice of motion correction to wording, little big replaced with Tiffin Park. The second item is the removal of the report dealing with new recruitment policy and related bylaw. So that's the agenda. The agenda stands except for those two items. You've heard the motion, Council. Councillor Gordon?
Sir, with that, I was under the impression that report agenda item ten four eight, the timing for establishing council remuneration and report ten for good buddy, which one ten for five were pulled or request was sent in to have those pulled for this evening? Did I just misunderstand what you were saying or are those two in fact pulled?
Uh, no, you're correct. They should have been. Sorry, that comes under the consent agenda.
Oh, my bad. We're talking about. Yeah, very good. I'll just go back on mute.
Thank you, though. So council, you've heard the motion on the favor? Thank you. That also carries and now to Councillor Gordon's point. We have a motion by Councillor Cunningham, seconded by Councillor Downer, that the items and related recommendations contained within the October third, sorry, October twenty-first, twenty twenty consent agenda as consent items having been considered by council be adopted with the exception of item ten point four point five CSR dash two zero two zero dash three three labor relations dash twenty twenty colon management slash non-union. And item ten point four point eight CSR twenty twenty dash three six timing for establishing council remuneration, which we considered under section fifteen reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration. Council, you've heard the motion. Councillor Gordon?
Right on. Yeah, no problem with that. I just wanted to quickly speak to one of the items that's not being pulled, and that's the one about the electronic participation and our continuance in that. I've been engaged in, you know, ongoing mostly by one guy here, so it's hard to pull one out of seventeen thousand and take it too seriously. But I just wanted to reiterate that the reason why we're doing this is because the health unit is advising it. The same health unit that advises, you know, we wear masks, then we wash our hands and and do all these other things. So there's no cowardness. We're not all cowering under the tables. We don't want to meet in person. If they gave the thumbs up tomorrow and left it just entirely up to us saying, you know what, there's really next to no risk or there's no greater risk, then I'd be there with my mask on and you'd be listening to me like this and I'd have no problem at all being in council chambers. But until that time happens, there is some expectation that we lead by example. We've already, you know, beat that dog to death there a couple of weeks ago. So we'll do what we can where we can. And but the business of the town has continued uninhibited by this pandemic largely thanks to the beauty of technology and the agility of our of our staff and the IT folks to make this all happen. So for as long as we can do this and as long as we're not, you know, bucking the trend across the province with other municipalities and the province and the feds, but I think it's prudent to continue to continue doing this. And I just don't want it to be taken as some kind of abdication of our responsibility or that we're afraid to go back and meet together. You know, nothing could be further from the truth. So I just wanted to put that on the record and let people know that, you know, I as soon as we can come back, I'm there. But until that time is is deemed reasonable and safe and prudent, then I'm here.
And Councillor, I think, as you pointed out, most people are understanding of the situation and consider what we're doing. We're meeting regularly. We're broadcasting it. So it's it's thanks for comments. All in favor of the motion? Sorry, Councillor Maine?
Sorry to interject. Just a quick comment. Look forward to hearing about the zoning application for the Habitat Humanity Build on Birchwood Drive. So that will be coming up in the next little while. But I just want to speak briefly to the draft plan for the one fifty-five William Street. I'm usually not a big fan of approving draft plan extensions, especially when there's been no changes. But if you look at this development, it's really it's basically the second phase of the the townhouses waterfront townhouses that are there. And so it only makes sense to approve the draft plan as it has historically been written. And if you follow the agenda, the links are there. I'll show you what the proposed draft plan is. So hopefully they can finish up and fill in some more units and and so thank you, your worship.
Councillor Cunningham?
Thank you. I just want to speak to one of the items on the CIP from October fifth to ninth, which was a thank you from two one one. And two one one has been incredibly busy during COVID, but not as busy as they would like to be. There are still a huge number of people who do not realize that if they reach out by dialing two one one or visiting the website two one one, they can find access to resources and services that are even up to the moment current to support them in COVID, even emergency funds and other services to help them maintain their mental health, maintain their family and their social structure. And it's just a phone call away. It's an up to date database that connects with all of our organizations and the the shout out on two one one was to all the organizations that have been working so diligently to support our communities. So I encourage you to just remember if you need to find a service, it is three numbers away, which is two one one, not two on one, two one one. You just dial that on your phone and get those the access to those services up to the moment with a real human being answering the phone.
Thank you, Councillor. Just wanted to point out, I was at the Birchwood unveiling of the project, this for Habitat for Humanity. They're very, very excited to get going. And they're also branching out into multi-residential. So we'll be looking for some amazing thing, more amazing things from from Habitat. The other comments from council before I call a question. Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries. I now have a motion moved by Councillor McGinn, seconded by Councillor Maine, that council resolve into committee of the whole. You've heard the question, Council, all in favor? And that carries as well. Thank you. So we now have along my agenda here. No presentations this evening. We have no deputations or petitions. We do, however, have a public meeting regarding dissolving awards. And the clerk will provide a PowerPoint presentation. I will have a script here just so we are clear what's to the process. I'd like to call the public meeting to order. This public meeting is being held in accordance with section fourteen of the town's notice by law two thousand nine dash forty-two, to consider a bylaw to dissolve the town of Midland ward boundaries and proceed with an at-large electoral system where the twenty twenty municipal twenty twenty-two, I beg your pardon, it's twenty twenty-two municipal election as permitted under section two 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 of the Municipal Act two thousand and one. As per section two 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 bracket three of the Municipal Act, should council approve the bylaw this evening? The municipality shall within fifteen days after the bylaws passed, give notice of the passing of the bylaw to the public specifying the last date for filing a notice of specials of appeal rather under subsection four. The purpose of this public meeting is to hear from residents and to seek clarity on the proposed bylaw. This is the residence opportunity to speak and counsel, sorry, council encourages you to do so. I will now ask the town's clerk to introduce the subject and to confirm notification and to note any correspondence received. Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you, your worship. So notice of the public meeting was posted within the Midland Mirror on October first as well as the town's website and on social media. With respect to correspondence received, there were two items received and they have been linked to the agenda this evening. So there was one from Mr. Bob Jeffrey and another piece of correspondence that was received from Ms. Turnbull.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I believe you have a PowerPoint presentation.
Yes.
For the public and for the council.
Okay, so this is just a very brief PowerPoint presentation. It may be repetitive to members of council, but I felt it important for the members of the public to understand what the proposed bylaw means for them in terms of the next election process for twenty twenty-two. So basically at its meeting held on September sixteenth, twenty twenty, council endorsed a staff report or considered staff report CL twenty twenty dash thirteen composition of council for the twenty twenty-two municipal election, which recommended that the ward system be eliminated and that the current size of council be reduced. Following deliberation on the matter, council passed a motion in favor of dissolving the ward system. And as you can see from the diagram, council are the town's electoral system is currently comprised of three wards and the image on the right side would show what what it would look like without the ward system. Next slide, please. So what does this mean for Midlands electors? So under the current model, the mayor and the deputy mayor are elected at large or by general vote. The remaining council positions are elected by ward. That means that other than the mayor and the deputy mayor positions, electors are restricted to voting for only those candidates that are running for the ward where they reside, where they own property, or if they are the spouse of an individual who resides or owns property within the specific ward. Under an at-large electoral process, there are no wards. Therefore, these voting restrictions do not apply. Electors may vote for any candidate they wish. Or it's just interesting to note that for the twenty twenty-two election, the town of Penetanguishing and the township of Timmy will be using an at-large electoral at-large electoral process. So for the next chart, it there's the pros and cons of an at-large electoral structure. So I for the benefit of those with the visual impairment, I'm going to actually go through each go through each column and and highlight the pros and cons for for each. So in terms of advantages of an elector at-large electoral process, there's greater choice and flexibility. So each voter has the opportunity to consider every candidate. Electors can select candidates they feel will do the best job rather than those who run in their ward. Residents have a larger number of councillors to approach with their concerns. The system promotes the concept of a townwide focus with councillors being elected by and concerned for the town as a whole rather than placing a priority on more singular interests. The likelihood of acclamations is reduced. And in terms of cost savings, a traditional voting method of polls and paper is a large undertaking and a resource resource-rich method. So there would be cost and efficiencies realized through an at-large electoral process in terms of the reduction of time devoted to the election preparation process, the traditional paper ballot method, the printing of the ballots, staffing requirements for the advance votes and election day and staff time in general just dedicated to ballot development review and preparation. Disadvantages within that large electoral process include candidates must campaign across the entire municipality. So this may make the cost of campaigning prohibitive. There's no designated voices for particular communities or localities within the municipality. Sorry, I lost my spot. At-large elections could lead to significant communities of interest and points of view being underrepresented. Candidates who appeal to areas where the voter turnout is highest tend to be elected disproportionately. The format can lead to confusion of responsibilities and duplication of effort on the part of councillors. But that being said, all council members represent the entire all residents within the municipality. A large number of candidates on the ballot could be confusing for voters. When the word system exists, electors entitled to vote only in the ward. So that's that's disadvantage again. And where they reside, even if the elector resides in one ward and is the owner or tenant of land in a different ward. And where there are three words exists in terms of election, again, there are fifteen separate ballots to elect nine members of council rather than five. So that is, basically, that concludes the PowerPoint. And now I'd just like to encourage anyone who wishes to comment to call in. If you'd like to comment, the number is one six four seven five five eight zero five eight eight. When you do dial that number, then enter the webinar code, webinar ID, nine seven six seven seven four four eight six five one. And the passcode is seven one six three two zero, then press pound. This is also being displayed as we speak on on Rogers. And thank you.
Sorry, we can't hear you, your worship.
Classic Zoom mistake, not unmuting. Every six months, I think I've learned. So I'm going to open the meeting to the public for comments. And I'm going to reiterate what the clerk has said that if you wish to comment, please call one six four seven five five eight zero five eight eight. Enter the webinar ID, which is nine seven six seven seven four four eight six five one. Enter the passcode, which is seven one six three two zero, and then press the pound sign. So
The passcode's not on the screen, your worship.
I see that. Can we change the slide to reflect the passcode? Is this screen being seen by the public, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it would be.
So we should, can you alter that slide?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'd also point out while we're waiting for that change that the number to call is also being displayed by Rogers Television for those watching and who wish may wish rather to call in. Once again, I'll read that number. It's one six four seven five five eight zero five eight eight. That's the phone number. The web ID number is nine seven six seven seven four four eight six five one. Then you enter the passcode, which is seven one six three two zero and then press the pound key.
Or the square root of pi.
I'm wondering if this is the winning lotto number.
Your worship, for those watching on Rogers, apparently the passcode's displayed in the lower third of the TV screen. So the only people that may be struggling are are the zoomers watching us on Zoom.
Thank you. There we go.
Mayor Strathairn, there is an individual that has been waiting with the phone number, so I will allow them to speak.
Please.
Go ahead, please.
Hello? Hello, are you there?
I I think the attendees have to be promoted to be panelists to be able to share some of their thoughts.
Thank you, Councillor. Hello, caller. Can you hear me?
He's he's on mute. Oh, now he's open.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello. Would you give the will you give us your name and your address, please?
My name is Mick Janky. My address is three four one two Beezy Road.
Thank you.
I apologize. I may be in the wrong place. I I I'm here for Habitat for Humanity. And we're just listening in to the council meeting based on the motions going tonight.
The Habitat motion was was passed earlier under the consent agenda.
Right. I apologize. I was just didn't get a chance to disconnect earlier. I apologize.
That's fine. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. You as well.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
I don't have any other callers at this moment.
Thank you. Do we have any sort of procedural limits around time? If we don't receive a call?
Not in terms of for virtual meetings. I think it's just maybe allowing individuals an opportunity to take the time to call in. It may take a few minutes.
Sure. Thank you.
See, this is the time we really miss meeting in person and having a room full of cheerful faces in the council chambers.
Exactly.
Your worship, if you like, perhaps we can, we could give five minutes or if you think that that's too long, can
I think we should give people a chance to
Okay.
They may have been looking or stumbling around the passcode or whatever. So I think it's appropriate to give some time. So it's not exactly stimulating program for programming for everybody sitting there waiting with us to for the phone to ring. However, I think it's important that the public does have a chance to speak on this.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
I think this is a very complicated process for people to call in. Maybe they could email quickly or something, whatever's easier maybe, and then maybe we could help them. Or even like if we could put that out there.
That's an option, of course, to I'm assuming it's an option, Madam Clerk, to have email questions, a statement emailed. And I believe that is part of the process. We've had two emails already, one from Mr. Jeffries and the other from Ms. Turnbull.
Yes, so anyone who was wishing to speak was with the notice and it was publicized on our website. We're encouraged to call two days in advance of the meeting to let us know that they wish to speak. And that way, but we do have an individual right now that is has called in.
Please. Hello, speaker. Speaker, can you hear me?
I'm I'm just getting them to mute. Oh, there we go.
Hello?
Hello. Can you give us your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Yvonne Teeta. I live at two two nine Bay Street in Midland.
Evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to let everybody know that this is a great thing to have the wards eliminated, because it puts everybody on the same playing field, and it doesn't just limit your, sorry, I can hear myself in the background here, I apologize. It doesn't limit you to your, your specific candidate that you, you're looking for, so I think it's a great idea to eliminate the ward system, and, and then it's a free-for-all that you can actually vote for anybody that, that you choose.
Thank you. Do you wish to add anything to that at all?
No.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions for the caller? Clarification, she was pretty clear. Thank you very much, Ms. Tietz, and have a wonderful evening, thanks for participating.
Thank you, you too, thank you, bye.
Bye-bye.
Your Worship? Just while we're waiting, this isn't really new business per se, but it does pertain to a conversation we had about these public meetings, so we're waiting and encouraging people to call in. Some people have been lamenting the fact that depending on how much preamble there is, these public meetings sometimes end up like at nine or 10 o'clock at night. Tonight is an exception, this is wonderful, it's early on, because we got through the consent agenda, but I know with our last public meeting, it wasn't until like 10:00 PM. So one thing I'd ask the clerk about doing is if we're considering the review of our, of our procedural policy is maybe always make the public consultations, whether it's a presentation, deputation, or an award, or whatever, always have those float to the top and become the first thing we do before we get into the rest of the meat of the meeting, so people can participate early. And that was the answer I got back from the clerk, and she could speak to it if she wanted to, was that that was a subject that was being considered under the review of our procedural policy for, so for the benefit of the people listening to us right now, knowing that we spoke about this last night at our Zoom thing, I did want to just make sure I brought it up, and then recognize that it is a challenge, and then I'm really happy that tonight, this is working out early, it's a little bummer, not a lot of people are calling in, but that we, I'd really like to see this happen more often, where we get the public stuff happening real promptly at the beginning of the meetings.
Hey, Counselor, I would just remind everybody, however, that the two preceding items, which are presentations, which typically are the presentations from outside the municipal organization, whether it's an organized group or an individual on a matter that presumably is of general interest to the public, as well as deputations, petitions, sort of fall in the same category, so I understand the, that people, you know, for waiting for a public meeting, or, I don't know how you prioritize them with respect to deputants, or, or just the presentations, for, Police Service Board, I know, moved any public elements to the beginning of the agenda, they modified procedure by law in order to accommodate that, so I'm sure the clerk is taking these things into consideration, and then the, we also, we also have the ability as council to shift these things around, seem appropriate to do so. I believe that's correct, is it, Madam Clerk? Through a two-thirds, two-thirds vote, change, change things up?
Yes, that is correct, and, and we are, yes, in to comment on Counselor Gordon's inquiry about the procedural bylaw, yes, we are looking at the procedural bylaw at this time, and we're looking for other opportunities to improve the process and make it more efficient, and to, to make it so that it is encouraging for the public to participate. So, yeah, so that is part of it, with moving our public meetings closer to the beginning of the council agenda, that way there, they're not commencing, you know, so late in the evening. So those are all things that are being considered, and when the bylaw is amended, it will be coming forward to council for comment and review prior to recommendations being adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Fantastic, thank you.
You're welcome. We don't have any additional callers at this time, and it's been.
Let's give it another minute, it's been, that'll be four minutes since the last caller. See with whether people are as slow typing as I am, that's. We're phoning. I meant to say to the folks who are on the Homelessness Action Committee, that there is a site called, Built, Built for Home, all one word, that would be of interest to you, there are a lot of resources there, came across it through the Community Safety and Wellbeing Planning Group Meeting earlier in the week, so I'd just like to pass that line, I was going to do, I've been looking for it in my notes, I went by it twice and then finally found it. And I'd also like to alert you to the fact that the federal government will announce probably next week, a rapid housing initiative, which looks at micro suites, and, and, what do you call it? I call it Lego housing, but it's, it's prefabbed homes that are assembled, assembled on-site, Vancouver Affordable Housing Authority, which is something you might want to look at, has done a lot of that, Toronto's about to put 1,000 units in, I believe, they've just approved 1,000 units within the city. So I just want to pass those on to you, because they've been sitting in my notebook, and I keep forgetting to do it, so.
That's great, pass anything you've got like that along, that'd be fantastic.
You bet. See if we can get people housed. The other thing, the other thing I think is important for people to know is that the Habitat for Humanity is moving towards multi-residential builds versus detached, semi-detached, they're acquiring the ability, and so there's a move afoot to do that. They were talking about that at the unveiling of the property on, on Birchwood this afternoon. Well, Counsel, I think we're just up to the almost 10-minute point here, I know we're probably close to 15 minutes since we opened the meeting, we've had one participant by phone, one participant in the Habitat for Humanity public meeting that did not occur, but we're happy to hear that they were interested in that particular item. Comments received in writing, one by Mr. Jeffrey against, and, and one by Ms. Turnbull in favor of dissolving wards. So in the absence of any further phone calls, I think it's prudent that we know, there being no further comments, I'll call the public meeting to a close, and I'll thank those who participated, and we'll move on to the rest of our agenda. That takes us then to reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration, and I believe the first item is, 10.4.5, which is CSR-2020-33, Labor Relations-2020, COLA Management/Non-Union. I believe that's the one, is it not? Yes. So, Counselor McGinn, I believe you pulled this item, can you, do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, please. So after reading this, it's not something that I can support, I can't support, you know, pay increase for anybody, given the fact that what has been going on in our community. I think it would be very irresponsible for us to choose to give people pay increases when we know that as a community, we're struggling, and the other thing is, is that we haven't even gone into budget yet, so we don't really know exactly where we are. We, yes, we have the draft, but it's important that we, that we find out truly where we are. Like the audit, the draft audited financials, to be clear for everybody else watching, I apologize, I understand my peers know what I'm referring to, but I need to speak a little clearer. So granted, it's not, you know, it's not a lot that is being asked for, but that's not the point. The point is, is that I don't think that it is an appropriate thing for us to be doing. I wouldn't accept a raise myself. It's not, it, I want to be certain that we're actually, my internet connection is unstable, shoot, okay, I want to be certain that what I am doing is, is I am representing the people, and that I am in harmony and union with the people, and the majority of people have been struggling themselves, so I don't believe this is a burden we should be putting on our taxpayers.
Thank you, and I'll just, my newness at running this, this portion of the meeting is, I should allow Madam Yorkan an opportunity to speak to the, the item, Ms. Burke.
Good evening, Your Worship, can you hear me?
I am a bit low in volume, can you?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Through Your Worship to Counselor McGinn, I appreciate and I thank you so very much for your comments, and the management non-union COLA increase is taking into account that we have also given our increases to each of our union groups, and the management non-union group is the only group that has not received an increase for 2020, and this council actually passed an increase for the 2020 in the budget that you approved last year in December.
Thank you, Ms. Yorkan, anything further to add before I turn it over to counsel?
No, Your Worship.
Thank you, so, just so we're, thank you, Counselor McGinn, but just so that everybody's aware, the audited statements were for 2019.
It's a follow-up question.
Okay, hello, thank you.
Thank you, yes, so, yes, and I understood there was a 2019, which goes back to the comment I was making about how we haven't yet done budget for this year. So at the time that we, I want to clarify and ask directly of Madam Yorkan, when the increase was approved, that was pre-COVID, could you please say yea or nay?
Ms. Yorkan?
Through Your Worship, to clarify, are you questioning, was the budget approved, or was the COLA increase, I apologize?
The increase that was, that was referenced, that you referenced for union employees and other employees, that this one is, that this is the only group that has not received an increase. The groups that you referenced, that was approved, pre-COVID, pre-pandemic, pre-global crisis, I believe that to be the truth, but I would like confirmation for everybody else viewing, that that indeed is the truth, that I'm not mistaken.
Through, through Your Worship to Counselor McGinn, the answer is yes, this was not approved pre-COVID, this was taken to the Human Resources Committee at the last committee meeting, for which they recommended it be brought forth to council.
Thank you, Counselor Shesky.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, I will be supporting this motion tonight. If you check the comparators, there's not one zero on that list, and I love Midland standing out and leading the way, this isn't, you know, a stat that I would love to own myself. As Ms. Yorkan said, we have approved raises for our union employees and other employees, and creating division within your employees is never good for morale, and happy employees do good work. Actually, the previous council could attest that we were actually asked not to come to the Christmas party, and it's one thing to not be invited, but we made some very interesting decisions back then that led to some serious tension between us and employees, and I don't want to make the same mistake again, teamwork is the ultimate goal, I think we all work better together. I think if we don't approve this, too, it's, it's basically sending the message to our union employees and to anybody who did get a raise, that the only reason that they did is not because we appreciate and respect them, but because we're bound by collective agreements, and that's not the message that I'd like to send. I feel like if we don't approve this tonight, we won't have to have this conversation again, because the non-union employees will get unions, because that's what unions are great for, and this is in our budget, it was approved in December of last year for this year, and it's likely in these employees' budgets as well, so I think we do the right thing and approve this, in my humble opinion.
Hey, Counselor, any other comments from counsel on this matter, Counselor Gordon?
Sorry, I got too many screens, I gotta get my mouse over to the mute button. The wages, the cost of living wage increase itself is not, you know, offensive to me at all, like it's the cost of living, you know, I get it. If this reported come to us before the pandemic, I don't even know there, there would have been polled, like it would have just been, you know, fait accompli. Of course, we pay our unions, because there's a collective agreement in place, and quite frankly, I mean, I know firsthand, that if a reasonable offer is rejected, then unions just go to arbitration and get it, and usually more, and, you know, you're out to punitive damages and your lawyer fees, and like you'd really only want to dig in and argue with unions if they're being very unrealistic. It never really boils down to ability to pay, it's about willingness to pay, so in my, in my mind here, we certainly have the ability to pay this, this is really, it's nickels and dimes, it's not a lot of money in totality, not getting cost of living increase this late in the year is not going to change anybody's financial status. They haven't had the money all year. If this was a request for a cost of living increase just now and not retroactive to the beginning of the year, I probably wouldn't have, you know, had any problem with it either, but this is about the willingness to pay and the optics of it. We've had a real, you know, hell of a year. Many of us, you know, have been very, very blessed to have not been super negatively impacted by this, but there's also many, many more of us that have. And I think the fact that we gave the unions a pay raise is because we had to, I mean, we also appreciate and love them and appreciate their work, but we did have to give them that, because otherwise we'd be bound in arbitration, and historically, you know what a beating Midland takes in arbitration, so to me, this is just the wrong time to approve this. I, you know, I'm not normally the deferral guy, I don't like to kick the can down the road, but I would be just as happy to come back and talk about this, and we know what our situation looks like in the spring, sometime in Q1, maybe first, maybe Q2, and look at a cost of living increase for 2021, and then maybe a little bit of retro, maybe back to this fall or something, I mean, this is all subject to negotiation, but right now, the message we send by giving the staff this raise is that we're giving them a raise, it wouldn't matter if it was one cent, it's the fact that it's a raise, so that's my problem in supporting this tonight, is it's about solidarity, and then plus, I would look like a bit of a, you know, a nut, because I, how many times have I put a motion for it to either freeze our pay or reduce this and cut some costs from our senior management, so if I, and those didn't work, you know, they, I didn't get consensus from my peers, so if I was to support this now, it'd be, you know, it would be very disingenuous, so the long story short of this is that I won't be supporting this tonight, it's not meant to be an insult to our staff, we appreciate what you do, this is a very tiny amount of money, it's the end of the year, let's talk about it in the spring after budget, when we know where we are financially and what the pandemic looks like, and, you know, let's, we'll have this discussion again, I know we will, so that's a really, I think so far I'll have to say on it.
Thank you, Counselor, I have Counselor Cunningham and then Counselor Shesky.
Thank you, Worship, I do support this motion as well, I feel that we need to make sure that, like all municipalities, we keep our staff, we attract a quality of applicant to come to this beautiful place to live, work, and play, and we need to respect them and keep them here, there's a lot of demand for the type of. There's a lot of demand for the type of talent that we are attracting right now. We have a wonderful option of lifestyle, which I think we, we really luck out with because we have historically underpaid this type of staff. And if we are going to compete and keep these quality people within our municipality, serving our community and moving us forward in the direction that our strategic vision has, we need these people to be respected. And this is an appropriate move to make at this time, which was approved in the previous budget.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Shesky.
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to uh, respond to Counselor Gordon's comments about not taking on unions unless they're being unrealistic. Uh, two out of three of our union groups only got a 1% increase. And uh, we didn't find that unrealistic at the time. And uh, I don't recall ever hearing a challenge on that. So I don't feel this is unrealistic. I think it's uh, totally realistic and it's consistent with what we've been doing with our other groups. And um, that's what um, ethical leadership is all about, is treating everybody fairly.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Maine.
What a great point, Counselor Shesky. I, I would concur. I think um, there's been so much hard work that's been going on behind the scenes, engineers, building inspectors. Although our offices have been shuttered and uh, you know, because of the pandemic, a lot of things have been still moving forward. King Street, uh, people have probably filed them, uh, filed more building permits than they would have. Uh, and so, but there's a whole suite of all these skilled workers that we have in the town. And so I think that's the point is fairness, what's fair uh, for everyone. And I think that this is a very um, reasonable uh, pay increase for the uh, non, uh, non-union management staff. And what's most important is the second motion that we're going to talk about is basically trying to decouple the idea that the management salary increases is pegged to the council. And by separating that, then we, we don't have to get into any conflicts or uh, councils approving their own raises type of debate or discussion. We can separate those issues and this 1.25 is quite reasonable. And i- in reality, uh, we're going to see a V-shaped uh, pandemic recovery. We're going to take a huge hit. And if everything goes to plan and we all get vaccinated, we're going to have a rapid recovery. Uh, the thing is, we just, we're not going to give people negative pay increases because the inflation may be adjusted because of uh, all the crazy economic things. But one larger point that we really need to talk with the community, and we don't really have any control on it at all, is having employers pay people living wages. And that's a whole topic for a whole different discussion, but that's a really important thing, especially when we talk about poverty and homelessness. So um, we try to set a good example and be a fair and equitable employer, pay people appropriate wages for the skills and talents that they have. And we have such an amazing team of all the different skillsets that we have across the organization. So I don't think this is unreasonable. And it also, again, is just part of the larger conversation about how we can, uh, you know, be a true leader uh, in the community and having a great staff. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Maine. Uh, one last point, uh, to Counselor McGinn. And then I'd like to make a comment and I'll call the question. Counselor McGinn.
So thank you for bringing up um, a living wage uh, to Counselor, Counselor Maine, the comment that you made and a fair wage. Um, the people in this tax bracket are above what would be considered a basic living wage. It's truth. Um, and that business is uh, you know, it's the people who do the grunt work. We have to, so we're talking about, you know, respecting every single person um, in, you know, in the corporation, definitely do respect every single person in the corporation. Uh, we also had prior, prior to this a while ago, um, approved the different uh, people in different pay scales, the, and the way they are. So there were people who already received rates. Um, so for us to go ahead and say 1.25, um, you know, that's, it's proportionate, be proportionate to their income and um, and to go back, we may have approved things, but we have the capacity and the ability to look at what reality is right now and what is happening right now and choose to make better choices. And if we were to do this, we effectively are, you know, not preventing ourselves from, from coming back to this and looking, you know, a couple of months down the road and saying, yeah, you know what? Where the corporation is in a great position and you know, this is somewhere that you know, if my peers, if you all decided to do, then you would choose to do. Right now, um, there has been things that people have been able to do differently. And there have been people in management positions um, that have been able to do things differently that potentially would have allowed them to actually save in costs and travel and whatnot, working from home. But the people who are um, you know, out there every single day, they didn't have the same opportunity. So I'm getting, you know, I am getting into some of the minutia here. Um, as I'm not saying that I don't respect everybody. I respect every single person in the capacity that they have and the effort that they give. Uh, but the people that we are talking about are making above, um, you know, the, we're making above what is the minimum um, suggested for a living in a fair wage. Uh, it is not anybody here sitting at this table's responsibility to say, well, because that person, because somebody makes a million dollars a year, they have decided that their, their choices in life are going to require making $900,000 a year.
I think, if you could keep, confine your comments to uh, the living wage is a to- totally different. I, I appreciate the notion. I actually agree with the notion. But we're talking about a 1.25% increase, which is comparable across the board to the union, non-union positions. And um, I think it's an important that we focus on that, that this, we have, to your point, uh, approved wage grids and those grids are under review every year. Uh, we do have individuals who uh, have been working exceptionally hard across the spectrum to ensure, to ensure. So let's focus on whether or not we are going to uh, to provide this group uh, the same treatment as the rest of the organization for the year 2020.
Okay, that's interesting. So you interrupted to make ask for a clarification and to try to direct where my commentary was going.
Yes.
Yes. I was commenting to another counselor's point and my opinion and how it applies here. So that's where I was coming from.
Wage is not up for discussion here. It's about. I'm going to call you out of order here in a second. So that's, I'm just going to call you out of order. So let's just move this agenda forward, please. And so we understand your position. Does I, does anybody here not understand the counselor's position? Mr. Dino, do you wish to comment to this? I see your, yes, please.
How am I out of order?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment? Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank, thank you, members of council. I certainly uh, appreciate everyone's opinion uh, on this topic. And I just wanted to provide certainly clarity from my perspective as I worked with um, Ms. York and on this recommendation. The important aspects, you know, that we considered was one that although we, we talking about the bargaining units versus non-management, we're trying to, to create one collective team here at the town of Midland. Certainly I think of them as one team. And I want to be able to treat them as one team. I understand that, you know, the commitments we have to the bargaining agents. I've been a member of the union. I understand the importance of that and certainly respect that. But in t- in terms of this, um, this particular recommendation, I also wanted to look at, and I've heard some counselors make this, this point, we are part of a larger community when we're competing for talent. And when certainly our employees or potential employees look at that community, they will judge us by how we act and how we treat our employees. They pay attention to these things. And when they see other, every other municipality providing those increases and Midland not, they'll take note of that. That, that's just a fact. And I, I'll certainly respect any decision this council makes. And I know our people will move on from this. But it is a fact, we are in a competitive environment and every other municipality is making an adjustment to those wages. Um, we are committed to looking at all of our jobs and doing a job evaluation. That is something we want to get done. We haven't got that done yet, but we've had other priorities. So we will commit to doing that to make sure we are paying our people appropriately. But I think certainly from the recommendation that both Ms. York and I supported in bringing forward here was we wanted to continue to make sure we were showing Midland was competitive. We've got tremendous assets that attract people here. I think not approving this, quite frankly, sends the wrong message because I think we are a highly, highly valuable place to work and live. We can get them here. It would be just confusing, quite frankly, if, if, if they didn't see that supported as well. Uh, so that's certainly my perspective, but I certainly appreciate where everyone comes from. I can tell you, everyone in this town of Midland appreciates having a job, including myself, including myself. That it is extremely important for us, but I also will take, uh, let you know that we, we are very proud of the, of the job we do in supporting everyone. The policies that we bring forward under your guidance help support those people who are trying to make a living, who are, who are trying to establish businesses. Keeping projects on time like King Street are really important. And there are people working, doing that every day in this town. So I think having something like this come forward that is already approved in a budget, I think is reasonable in terms of its, of its uh, recommendation relative to what the bargaining unit obtained. And as reasonable in terms of what's being done in other municipalities, to me makes um, good sense. But I will rely upon certainly the judgment of, of this count.
Thank you, Mr. Dino. I'm going to read this into the uh, the record here. A move by Counselor Cunningham, seconded by Counselor Downer, that staff report CRS dash 2020 dash 33, 2020 management slash non-union cola dated October 21, 2020, be received. And that administration be instructed to process, process rather, a 1.25% coal adjustment to the management slash non-union employee active, actively employed, employees actively employed as of October 21, 2020, retroactive to January 1, 2020. And that council directs administration to amend bylaw 2015 dash 72 to update the management non-union terms and conditions of employment and policy manual wage grid based on the 2020 increase. So we've had a considerable conversation around this. Um, I'm going to allow Counselor McGinn to continue, but please focus your comments on the cola issue, not cost, not uh, uh, the other issues that uh, frankly, uh, Counselor Maine brought up and sort of steered the conversation away from, I believe, the matter at hand. So I appreciate that. I support the, the uh, living wage notion. This is not what this matter is about, in my opinion. So can we stick to the matter of the cost of living and it's uh, whether or not we're going to pass it? Counselor again?
I will attempt to respond in as sincerely as I possibly can given the restrictions that have been put on my speech. We will be bypassing this. We will be retroacting people's pay. That's a chunk that's coming out. I still believe that is wrong. There are many other companies that have been in the same position. Small companies, large companies that have said we're in a pandemic. What is the best thing to do financially for the corporation as an entity unto itself? Everybody knows that they are valued. There have been businesses in our own town that have said, shoot, you know what? We have to because something was negotiated. This we have a choice about.
Well said. Thank you. Um, so I, I, I saw Counselor Shesky's hand up, but I, is there something you want to add to this, Counselor?
I apologize. I was inspired by the CEO's comments, so I wasn't going to speak anymore, but I just wanted to note uh, that in the report, it was mentioned that our CEO has actually refused the increase uh, or turned it down. So I just wanted to commend him for uh, leading by example and uh, taking that step. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. And I think with that, uh, I'm going to call.
Your worship, your worship.
Yes.
Let the call for a recorded vote on this, please.
Madam Clerk, we have a request for a recorded vote. Uh, so with that, would you call the roll, please?
Okay, thank you, your worship. So when I call your name, coun- counselors or members of council, please answer yes or no. Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
No.
Counselor Oshinsky?
Yes.
Counselor Maine?
Yes.
Counselor Post?
No.
Counselor McGinn? Counselor McGinn? Okay, thank you. Counselor Cunningham?
Yes.
And Mayor Strathern?
Yes.
And that motion is carried five to three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda uh, is item 10.4.8 CSR dash 2020 dash 36, timing for establishing counsel remuneration. And uh, Ms. York and do you want to speak to the staff report prior to my engaging counsel, reading a motion?
Good evening, your worship, and yes, thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Maine actually led us into it earlier in that at the Human Resources Committee meeting, the question did come up with regards to confirmation, how do we establish counsel remuneration? And for that, uh, it was at the request of the HR Committee that we formalized that in 2017. Uh, you will recall, uh, the treasurer had brought forth a report with regards to the one-third tax increase and how that would change for council. And in that, it was the decision of that council that in the fourth quarter of the uh, council term, that that would be when a job evaluation would be done using market in- information and come back to council with a report to establish what council income would be for the following council term. So the report presented before you this evening is just formalizing that so as to establish it and set our records going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. York and um, I'm going to read this into the record. Uh, moved by Counselor Oshinsky, just not if you agree. Thank you. And seconded by Counselor Maine. Thank you. Uh, that staff report CRS dash 2020 dash 36 regarding the timing of for establishing counsel remuneration dated October 1, 21, 2020, be received. And that council determines the council remuneration will be established in the fourth year of the council term. And that council directs administration to engage and approve third party to conduct a market evaluation of council wages. And that the administration, and that administration bring forth a report to council as part of the fourth year of council term budget deliberations. So counsel, you've heard the um, you've heard the um, motion. And I believe this was pulled again by Counselor McGinn. So I'll counsel McGinn. I'd like to give you the opportunity to speak to that, please.
Hi, so the reason why I pulled this one.
You muted yourself.
You muted yourself, sorry.
Oh.
There we go.
Okay, try again. Um, I'll start at the beginning. The reason why I pulled this was because I thought it would be a good idea to discuss the value of.
You muted yourself again. Somehow you're me, being muted. I don't understand. Try, try again.
If you hold spacebar, it keeps you off mute.
There you go.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So that's, okay, so.
I think your spacebar is glitchy. Just click your mouse and unmute yourself. You don't have to touch the computer.
You're still muted. Nope, she's gone. Well, oh, I see that Counselor Gordon had a request to pick up. So why don't we pursue this with Counselor Gordon and we hope that Counselor McGinn. this with councillor Gordon and we hope that custom again can get back into the conversation.
Yeah, your mute symbol is like just blinking on and off like a Christmas tree.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so, um, uh, first of all, I get it, like council gets wage increases for years. I, I have no like problem with that. Uh, they need to be studied and you know, your comparators are done. I don't take any objection to this, uh, at all. At the end, we'll have to see what the report looks like and see if we adopt it for the next term of council. I think that's the key. We're not voting a raise for ourself. I think it's actually wise that we do this in the end because we're actually potentially giving the raise to, you know, and arguably there's going to be a raise. It's four years, right? To the next council. But my issue is why do we need to spend the dough on a third party? We seem to be like absolutely loving consultants and giving third party work and we spend, you know, there's arguably times where we need consultants because we don't have the talent in house or it's too many cycles. I get it. But this is something in my mind, maybe I'm oversimplifying it. She's back, um, that we could accomplish over a couple of coffees and a few emails and maybe some phone calls to other like sized municipalities or consult the AMO priority already collects this data and we could probably get it in one email. And save ourselves, uh, the consultancy fee. Now, I don't, it doesn't say in here how much money we're planning on spending on the consultant, but I know the one, one of many common laments about the municipality is our propensity to just dump cash on consultants for just about anything and everything. And here's a simple one in my mind that our talented staff could very easily collect and do, and I would trust them to do a good job and bring comparative analysis to us. And we can make a decision based on their findings and save probably a few grand of, of tax dollars. So I would just like to see this, uh, modified friendly amendment or whatever we're going to call it. Assuming staff agree that they have the capacity to make the phone calls or do the research between now and whenever this comes back to us, uh, and do this in-house rather than paying a consultant. That's my only issue with this is I like to see us save the consultancy when I believe we, it's something that's easily accomplished in-house.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, custom again was back for a minute. Uh, she's offline again. Anybody else wish to speak to this? Uh, councillor Cunningham. And I have councillor Mayne.
There we go. Um, one question I did have, just in looking at this, I think it's a good idea. I think it's a wise standard of every four years. I just think it might be nice if the incoming council when choosing to run for election might know what they would be paid prior to choosing to run. I wonder if that would be a, a valuable piece of information. Whether we go up or we go down at that time. And if we wait until our budget deliberations, which are essentially giving that new council their budget for the coming year. That might be a little later than would be appropriate to entice more people to run for election. And perhaps while it could be that incoming council's pay rate, could that decision be made prior to declaring whether you want to run or not?
Thank you. Councillor Mayne.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this just really cleans it up and, and by decoupling, uh, the staff increases, it just, it's a good optics. Uh, and I think that America is not really the best place for comparative politics most days. Uh, but the twenty seventh amendment actually touches on this. It says, you know, Congress can't approve their own pay wage. It has to be uh, approved the next Congress. And so that's the same philosophy is we're going to approve next council. So in terms of the consultant or a third party or whomever, uh, other places have gone with just a simple ad hoc committee. Uh, so I mean, those are lots of options that we can put out there. And I think to the point is, you know, a couple of emails to AM O or AM CTO, the clerks and treasurers, they would be able to put information together. And I think you just have to do it, uh, in the right way. Uh, don't rush it. Get all the information together and put a little bit of analysis behind it. And I think people are very supportive. And, uh, in terms of the municipal election in twenty twenty two, um, it would have been nice to have ranked balloting. I guess maybe that's a news item of the day. It doesn't, uh, but, uh,
You're going to gang councilman.
Oh, sorry. Uh, well, we won't talk about ranked balloting. I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't say that.
Thank you.
They moved, uh, last election, they moved our January, uh, used to be able to start running for election in January and they moved that window uh, to be a much smaller window. So in fact, gives us the time to be able to get us towards, I think it's July sometime when the election will open in twenty two. So early, uh, twenty twenty two would be a couple of months to take to, take the time to, uh, review, uh, the information put together. I think it sounds like everyone's supportive of the idea and, uh, and it seems, uh, address a lot of issues that people have had in the past.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Post, please.
Um, I agree with councillor Mayne and councillor Gordon. I would like to see this done without spending a ton of money or very, very little to none. I, I don't think it's something that we need to farm out and, and spend money that we could keep in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, one second councillor Gordon, anybody else wish to speak to this first time? Councillor Gordon.
Okay. So thank you. It sounds like there may be appetite here to slice and dice this recommendation a little bit. Um, do we need to parse it and, or, and potentially remove that one, uh, paragraph or sentence that says that council directs administration to engage a third party to conduct a market evaluation? If you just leave that out of there.
So I think that you'll, you'll think you'll find that, uh, staff are in fact are a competent qualified third party. And I think staff have heard our, our, uh, wishes here.
Oh, okay. Yeah. As long as that's clear, then yeah, it's fine. Fine. Sure.
So I think that, that, you know, that if, if, if staff feels that they can do this in a way, and I suspect that they can, they've done it before. And, uh, I see Mr. DeNo here, uh, comments, Mr. DeNo.
Uh, thank you, worship. Yes, i- if I may, I think, I think the wording allows us some latitude. Third party could, doesn't necessarily mean the use of a consultant. I mean, the evidence that we could provide would be outside of, it could be through other agencies that, that provide that sort of information. I think we want evidence that certainly uh, council would feel is, is representative. And two, that our, our residents would feel are legitimate. So, uh, can we do that with means other than consultants? Like, you know, we're a creative group. We'll, uh, we'll certainly try and do that. Your direction is to drive, do this cost effectively. So that's, that's certainly what we'll take away.
Thank you, Mr. DeNo. And I think the, the point here is to decouple council from the actual data gathering. That you're going to act on a recommendation outside of this body. So I, I, I think the motion is, covers what we want to see happen. Mr. DeNo has confirmed that staff have heard that message. Uh, oh, you're back, councilman again, please. You're still muted. Oh, there we go.
There, hopefully it stays. Um. So I missed the conversation. Um, but I, I heard a little bit before I could see. And I'm sorry. Pardon me.
You want to recap?
If you don't mind. I don't want to be repeating everybody.
So basically, as I understand it, is, uh, council is looking for a decoupling of the, of the data collection and so on from council itself. So, so that they perceive conflict. Takes a step back. Uh, councillor Gordon suggested that he did, and as councillor Post also said, that, uh, neither wanted to see us using, uh, consultants and putting money towards consultants. Uh, suggesting that we could do it internally. Mr. DeNo has confirmed that the, uh, you know, a qualified third party in fact can be staff. They have done this before, uh, and they are quite capable of canvassing us, like, uh, who said it now, AMO, AM CTO and other organizations deal with compensation matters, or at least are aware of them for councils across province. So that's where we stand now. And so, uh, without further ado, your comments, please.
That sounds wonderful. If it's something that, that potentially staff can do, and thank you for reiterating that. And I'm just not going to play with my mute button unless I absolutely have to.
My decision. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, so, uh, we, we've heard the, um, the motion.
Ms. Yorkin is up here.
Sorry, Ms. Yorkin. Sorry, didn't see you there.
It's okay. I figured out how to do this. Zoom, here we are. Uh, to councillor, through your worship, to councillor Gordon, absolutely. Much like the report that you received this evening. Um, with regards to, um, the management non-union cola, we can do same and similar for council wages. And again, it's bringing you the data and information. So I'm showing you exactly who our municipal comparators are based upon, um, like services with other municipalities. In addition to that, we're also sharing with you what our Simcoe partners are doing and, uh, for that, we'll give you that information. Four years is an awful long time and a lot can change in those four years. So those reports, um, I have no problem with amending the motion should council wish to. And madam clerk, I have checked with her. She said, if council wishes to amend the motion, we can do that on the, on the go. Um, and to councillor Mayne's comment, we can absolutely change that to maybe having it by the end of the second quarter. Uh, the report so that that way you have it because end of second quarter will put you end of June. So that would be bringing it in unfortunately, July to council. If that is of assistance.
Thank you for that. Um, I think at this stage, uh, we came to an agreement on the, that the paragraph actually reflects the wishes of council and that council has reflected, has presented those wishes to staff who have heard that. So I think at this point, I'm just going to call the question on the motion as it, as it stands. So with that, uh, council, all in favor of the motion, please. Thank you. That carries, uh, Adam clerk. Where are we now? Now have a report from, uh, the CEO with respect to COVID, an update. Mr. CEO.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. Uh, I'd like to start the, uh, the update on COVID with, uh, certainly some, some good news from, I think, all of our perspective. If you saw the announcement we made earlier today, uh, and it's on our website, we are, uh, welcoming our new town solicitor and executive director of corporate services on the twenty sixth of this month. So Tina Lakoko will be joining the town of Midland and we're all absolutely thrilled uh, that she has chosen, chosen to join our team. Uh, when you read about Tina's background, you'll understand certainly that this is, I think, a great fit for, uh, Midland and North Simcoe. This is someone who's very passionate about, uh, about this environment and the outdoors. Uh, very passionate about serving and very passionate about, uh, uh, leading people. So from all those aspects, I think we found a terrific fit for our team. Tina's obviously got a legal background and she's, she's got experience both in large urban settings and in small towns. She grew up in the north, so she's certainly familiar with a lot of pressures in small towns and and, and so that's a good perspective to bring. She also brings with her an MBA in both finance and HR. So again, in corporate services, that's a, a great, a great help to us as well. Um, another aspect that she brings through our experience is she was a clerk. So as we look at our, our bylaw procedures, you know, it'll be, it'll be good to get Tina's perspective on, on certainly what we're doing uh, from that, from that standpoint. So certainly, uh, on behalf of all the applicants who apply to this position, there were a number of them. Uh, I want to thank them for, for considering, uh, Midland. I think we're very grateful that Tina has accepted our, our, our offer and, and is able to start relatively soon, although it might be virtually. I don't know. She's looking forward to meeting everyone. So, uh, certainly great for us to have someone, uh, round out the, the senior leadership team and, uh, and help us take uh, Midland to where this council wants to go, which is, uh, just a tremendous opportunity. So that's, uh, that was certainly, uh, good news, uh, for us to share today. In terms of what's going on with COVID, uh, if you're following the numbers, you'll, you'll certainly see that, uh, Midland remains at twelve cases reported since the start of this, uh, pandemic. And, uh, so we've been holding at that number for some, for some time and, uh, I think we all consider ourselves, uh, very lucky to do so. Uh, you can follow the news and certainly see what's happening in some of the long-term care facilities in this county. Uh, which over a span of a month saw seven deaths. And this is just one facility. Forty resident or forty, uh, I think residents were infected, twenty eight staff were infected at one facility. So this thing travels extremely rapidly if it gets a hold. So we know we're in this, uh, together, not just, uh, in Midland, but throughout the county. And those numbers are continuing to escalate, but that was expected. I think over the next few weeks is really the important time to see if those numbers start to come down as, as the health expect, uh, health experts are again expecting. Um, at the town, we're continuing to work with our partners, you know, uh, to see what we can do to, to offer the services in a safe manner. You know, we're looking at, uh, all of our facilities. We're making use of our gym. Uh, again, in a safe manner, we've already talked about some of the other facilities in the rec center that are available. Uh, some of our groups are again getting together in that facility in very small, uh, small quadries of people. Um, we'll continue to look at, at ways we can use the facility with the cold weather coming. And, uh, certainly invite, you know, groups who, who, uh, have ideas and on how we could do that to, to partner with us and take, you know, take them through the process with the health unit. So uh, a big thank you to the health unit for, to, to help us look at all of these things. It's, it's a really daunting task that they have to do on a regular day, regular day to work with all of the municipalities, with all of the things we have to do. Uh, but they've been, uh, tremendous partners, as has been the county. Uh, you know, Mark Akins and the, and the group at the county have been fantastic in getting all of us together to share best practices. So that happens literally every day uh, throughout the weekend, on weekends, because a lot of those announcements come, come out on a Friday. Um, but we're all again, very privileged to be able to, to try and be creative and, and offer those types of services. Uh, much like, um, you know, the update that councillor, uh, Cunningham offered, I want to encourage people to, to use two-on-one uh, service. There's a lot of services there that you, you can take part of. I'd also invite them to go to simcomoscokehealth.org. So again, that's simcomoscokehealth.org online. And you'll get a tremendous amount of information. I think it's in very readable fashion. Uh, that'll give you good instructions on how to deal with practical things like Halloween. If you're going hunting, you know, uh, how to deal with, uh, with all kinds of issues that you may be having from a mental health standpoint. So a lot of good, good practical information there in very readable format that I'd encourage all of our citizens uh, to take care of. There's also some visuals there on where exactly the county is standing in terms of the, uh, the epidemic. And it breaks it down into various areas, you know, where the virus is spreading, uh, where, where, where we are in terms of our testing capacity. How is the health system capacity and how is the health system responding throughout the county to all of this? We're in a yellow status right now. If you look at all of those factors, some of them are in red and some of them are, are in green. So it's a bit all over the place. Um, but again, I think the overall tone is one of, uh, great caution and taking a look at where the numbers are over the next few weeks. Uh, but in all, I, I'd like to again, thank, thank all of our staff who are continuing to, to work very hard to to come up with ways to serve the public and certainly thank all the members of council who continue to provide us with the extremely valuable feedback that you do, um, because you're engaged with, with our residents so well. Uh, certainly continue to welcome that type of feedback. Uh, that's the extent of my update, uh, your worship and certainly, uh, would, uh, welcome any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeNo. I, uh, see councillor Gordon has a request to speak, councillor Gordon.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. DeNo. And this is just, uh, I mean, this shouldn't come as a surprise. We've had dialogue by email about this, uh, some of those um, comments that you're talking about. I'm, you know, religious about submitting those to you and other staff. So this particular one is from our seniors, as you know, uh, they now so weather approaches, the cold weather approaches, they're really looking forward to being able to resume using the sports and rec center. Either using one of the empty ice services or the great hall or the halls, uh, to walk and get some exercise in. The alternative is they're stuck going to Walmart and you can only take so much of Walmart. Like God love it, but you know, it's pretty expensive too. It's like going to Costco, you go in there for five bucks and you come out with five hundred. So the key is, uh, if there's a possible way to get them in there, we're not talking about hundreds of seniors, but there are maybe a dozen or so or a couple of dozen that really, really would like to see us, um, make that sports and rec center available to them. If there's any way we can do that. And I'm, I'm confident there is. I know you're, you've committed to doing everything you can. Uh, it got, the email got forwarded and passed along to councillor Cunningham as well, who's on the seniors committee, which is good. They can look at more sort of, uh, midterm strategy, but I am definitely looking for some kind of short-term uh, commitment that we can, you know, maybe even give an update by next council meeting. Strategy, but I am definitely looking for some kind of short term commitment that we can, you know, maybe even give an update by next council meeting unless, you know, the second wave plows us under. That there's a way for the seniors to get in and use the sports and rec center safely on a limited capacity in some way, rather than just a carpet. No, because, you know, they see other people using the sports and rec center. So. That was one of those concerns that passed along, and I just wanted to give you the opportunity to. You know, share the town's position on that with the folks that are watching right now.
Thank you, Counselor, Mr. Dino.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Miss, your worship to Counselor Gordon. Yes, thank you for sharing. The feedback from that resident and and certainly it's. It's reflective of a lot of the discussion that's been happening in municipalities. We're all turning our attention. To what services we'll need to provide through the winter months. And certainly, I think we all appreciate the impact on on people's mental health. Being restricted. In in confines where where they can't get out and maybe enjoy. The outdoors. Some people don't have that capacity, so they need access to bigger spaces. Where they can do some of these things like like walk or, you know, use their wheelchairs or walkers to to get a bit of exercise. So. That's certainly not lost upon, I'd say, any of the municipalities. The one individual that came forward, it certainly it it makes our life easier in a municipality of if groups of people come together. And help us with the coordination of of that. So certainly part of what we will do is reach out to groups like Ascanonia. You know, certainly we'll be talking to Counselor Cunningham about. The seniors committee to see if there's a role that they can play and and determining how we coordinate access to this. We'll work on our side of this, which is trying to find an area where we can provide some kind of service. And if we have to, we'll have to see if we provide the administration around providing people access and patrolling the area to make sure. Protocols are in place, but sometimes some of these groups can take that on and relieve that burden from from the municipality. That happens with. You know, organizations like the hockey or the or the or the basketball organizations. So. We will, as as you've said, try to be creative and look for for some way to do this. We understand the need. Clearly, it's it's been talked about. Again, we'll we'll see if we can find some groups that would be willing to participate in this. To come up with an overall solution, but certainly welcome any feedback like this or any other ideas or requests that residents have.
Custom.
Thank you. That just touches on another point about warming centers. We were fortunate while we had a nice warm summer, we only had to have a cooling centers up and running for a couple of times. But I really fear is that you never know how cold the winter or how much snow we're going to get. We're definitely going to get some as we're almost two months away from Christmas. So has there any thoughts about warming centers and how the town can basically adapt to that?
Yes, thank you, worship to to Counselor Maine. Yes, that's again, part of the whole consideration, much like when. When summer came around, the cooling centers issue was was something that we'd all talked about. So certainly at the county level and. And certainly, you know, at the local municipal level, those are things we're considering. One of the reasons why we've held off on our second ice pad. At at our rec center is is one, we just didn't think it was appropriate to continue to offer those services given where we were with the pandemic. So we wanted again to be cautious. We wanted to take care of the one service we were offering on the one ice pad and make sure we were. Doing that extremely well, managing those protocols. And we also wanted to keep the flexibility of that, you know, large space available if there were other needs coming up. Could that be a place where you can walk? Could that be a place where you keep warm? Could that be a place where you do something else? Those are all areas, you know, that we'll certainly look at. And again, you know, I think that's valuable feedback to us that just reinforces the things that we're looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Dino.
Just a quick point, your worship. We're also hearing homeless shelters, food banks are going to be under extreme pressure this winter. And we can't really do much about that, but I know this is going to be a very outside kind of a winter. And so the things that we already do, we play up to our strengths. Of snow removal sidewalks and that type of thing. And I think that there's going to be a high demand from the public on that. So. I mean, you guys are well aware, we have a very capable operation staff. So. I know they cross their fingers that they hope that there isn't snow, but we know it's coming. And so we appreciate all the forethought that goes into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Dino? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Dino. That finishes section 15. We'll go to section 16 notices of motion. Are there any notices of motion for this evening? Seeing done, general announcements. Must be a quiet week. Counselor Cunningham.
I've always got some announcement up my sleeve. I just want to remind people who are in the creative community, whether they're artists, musicians or performers. Anyone involved in culture or creativity, that the Culture Alliance is having an incredible conference coming up online through the month of November. It will be starting on November 3rd. You can go to culturalalliance.ca to get tickets to learn how to rebuild stronger, which seems to be the catchphrase. That is going on for businesses worldwide. Amazing speakers, a great focus on overcoming problems and hurdling those hurdles that have been thrown in your way. As you try to make a living as someone in the creative world. I think it's going to be an exciting conference. Rogers TV is. Has set up and is donating the tech to make sure that we can record it. And have it available to you after and the tickets, while not at the early bird price, are still only $25 for all eight sessions. And those ongoing recordings. So if you know someone who needs a boost in their creative business, this is an amazing opportunity to learn and to network. So we break out sessions for networking. And having some questions with those people who are coming in to speak as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Maine, I believe you had something.
Thank you. Well, I was involved with the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit on active school travel planning. But obviously we've got sidelined with COVID. It looks like they've soft launched the on the move initiative across Simcoe Muskoka. And it's basically a great program trying to encourage. Parents and teachers and schoolchildren to walk and bike to school, especially as we transition from the nicer weather into cold rainy and winter months. To bundle the kids up and get them walking in the routine of walking every day uphill both ways. So that's a great initiative from the health unit. They've been just doing such great work. I did want to mention that we are about two we two months out from Christmas holiday season. Just to again, plug the downtown, got to check out downtown. The shops are there and they have all the different sales methods. If you don't want to go in store, you can call them. You can go online. Lots of them have very different sales methods so that you can shop comfortably and safely downtown. And also just check out the new King Street. It looks fantastic and it's really coming together. And so those were the two points I wanted to raise. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gordon.
Thanks. This is just further to some correspondence that I had earlier this week. Of course, we have just, I guess, believe now we formed the homelessness action committee where, you know, or we've got a multifaceted role. But speaking of homelessness, there has been concerns about a new little mini tent. Gathering. I wouldn't call it a tent city, tent village, maybe. That's on the south side of Young Street. It's very obvious. Anybody that walks Young Street by the Shamrock. It's on private property, though. So the complaints that came in, some of them were mostly safety related. Were brought in and I did speak to the bylaw officer and he forwarded that information along to the O P P policing partners as well. But this is on private property, not town property. Which changes a little bit the dynamic on on what the town can do about that. So to the many people that have contacted me this week about these concerns. I've kept you in the loop and and just wanted to let you know formally like on the 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 meeting here that. Bylaw is aware of this. The O P P is aware of this. There isn't any direct, you know, threat right now. The danger is more likely in the people that are going to be living out out of doors. And that's one of the missions of our committee is to try and engage Denny and the other service groups that. Target, trying to help the homeless to try and get them out of the tents and into some other place right now where that's possible. So. I just want to know that it's important. It wasn't something I could put a motion in on. It's private property. So it really kind of binds council's hands. It's more a bylaw issue with private property owners. But that we know it's there and that the tent cities are will start to pop up again. Because there are people that for a few different reasons, either don't want to or can't make themselves part of a shelter or the. Motelling that's happening right now. So. Please follow the homelessness action committee, the updates to council and continue to communicate with the town. If you feel that something's not right or someone's in danger or you're in danger. Your property is in danger, keep making those 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 complaints because and just realize that there's little. That actual councils can do. We can't direct municipal bylaw. We can't wade into any of that kind of stuff. So we can act as a sympathetic here. You're certainly talking to the right guy. If you're talking to myself or other members of the committee. And we'll try and manage the expectations and do what we can for you. So please keep the channels communications open and I just wanted to formally acknowledge tonight at the announcements that. I hear you loud and clear. The town's aware of this and collectively we'll try and work on a solution.
Counselor, any, any outs? Saying no other. Announcements, I have a motion moved by Counselor Maine, seconded by Counselor McGinn at the committee of the whole rise and report. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries. With that, I have a motion. Moved by Counselor prose, seconded by Counselor Oshinsky. That the recommendations of the committee of the whole for the meeting of October 21, 2020 be adopted as resolutions of council. Comments or questions? Saying saying none, I just keep seeing some of the yeses going up all in favor. Thank you. That carries. Takes us to. Formal session. Where we are looking at motions for which notice was given. I have a. Motion here by moved by Counselor Oshinsky. And I will need a second here for this, but I will read the motion. The traffic calming measures be considered for the entrance to Tiffin Park. Adam Dixon Way and that the roadway through Tiffin Park. Sorry, and the roadway through Tiffin Park. Such measures to include, but not to be limited to a speed limit posting and sign indicating kids are playing and. The staff be directed to prepare a report highlighting measures that could be undertaken to reduce speed and increase safety for councils' consideration at a future meeting. I need a second here, please. Counselor Gordon, thank you. Counselor Oshinsky, would you like to speak to this, please?
Sure, I'll keep it very brief. Thank you, worship. This is a Midland resident who lives very close to the entrance to Tiffin Park, lifelong Midland resident. Lifelong Midland business owner and has had concerns over the years and growing concerns about safety of people driving in and out of there. Apparently there's more traffic down there recently with pickleball courts being so. Well used and which is great, but apparently that and other uses has created some safety concerns. Speedy driving and there has been O P P involvement, but they said that it's assumed to be a 50 at this point. So. Just to reduce the speed would give them the ability to be able to enforce some safety down there. And as I mentioned at the last council meeting, this is separate completely to our transportation study. And transportation master plan. And I've confirmed that with Mr. Campbell. So this is a separate issue altogether, and I'm just trying to help a resident with concern. Resolve many year issue that he's been dealing with. He also had a terrible, terrible loss in his family this week, so I'd love to send my condolences at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Comments or questions for the counselor from council? Custom.
Yeah, this is actually a really good point because a lot of our parks, especially Little Lake, we put up the sign that tried to reduce the speed. And in many of our parks with gravel driveways and entrances, it really kind of widens out and it's not really well delineated in many of our parks. And so you can see how there's issues of people gripping back and forth. So. Signage is very simple. The next step up would be, you know, putting in little curbs or bollards or. That that type of thing. So those are the kind of simple options that I think that that resident would probably be looking for. And I think maybe Counselor Oshinsky can confirm. But it it's only makes sense to try to make our parks safe pedestrian friendly areas. And again, slow cars down, especially in an area where they shouldn't be going very quickly. It's very much a pedestrian area. So support that and, you know, signage is. You know, it's very low cost. It's not always effective. And so if that doesn't work, then we can look at other things. As we look at our parks and look at park improvements for Tiffen. So I think it's a good point and it's an issue that should be addressed.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? So I shall call a question then. All in favor? Thank you. That carries. So I have a motion here by myself. So I'm going to ask Counselor Downer if he'll chair the meeting. While we consider this.
Very good, sir.
So I don't think you have the motion. I don't to get the motion in front of you, but I'll so I'll read it and then ask for a second. Thank you. So live by myself, seconded by person to be determined that the flags on municipal facilities be refreshed or remembered state in honor of our veterans and the sacrifices they made for our freedom. And that all residents of the town of Midland be encouraged to refresh their Canadian flags in preparation for a remembered state.
We're looking for a second there to that motion. Counselor Cunningham?
Thank you.
You've heard the motion. Is there any? Discussion? Hearing none? We'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion? Oppose if any, motion is carry. Back to you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Downer. So we're now to section 21. Bylaws. Oh. Got behind myself here. I have a motion moved by Counselor Oshinsky, seconded by Counselor McGinn. At the following bylaws, bylaw 2020 dash five seven authorizing the borrowing upon amortizing debentures. In the principal amount of $12 million towards the cost of Midland Downtown Project revitalization project. Bylaw 2020 dash five eight dissolve the ward system of electoral representation for the corporation of the town of Midland. And institute an at large system of electoral representation and to repeal bylaw 79 dash five eight. Bylaw 2020 dash five nine encroachment agreement between Michael Anderson and the town of Midland in relation to 396 million. That be passed and enacted. Council, you've heard the motion. All in favor? Oh, I'm very proud and I have a request to speak from Counselor Gordon.
Thanks. Yeah, this has included the word, the word bylaw, right? Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Okay, I just because there was a, you know, ill attended public meeting, I just wanted to speak to this just briefly. You know, my my opinion on it, I think I already said it all. I think at the night we kind of beat this to death. About reducing council size and everything, but I did want to address the concerns of the two residents that did take the time to write in. I spoke to Mr. Jeffrey. I've read his email and I've talked to him in the past as well. And his concerns are well founded and well placed. I can understand them. But I want to, I guess, all I can offer in reassurance, because I do believe that this is probably what this is in the best interest of of Midland for a bunch of reasons. I'm not going to, you know, rehash right now. Anyone wants to talk to me about it, happy to anytime. But the bottom line is, I don't think there's anybody sitting here around this table. That when somebody calls with their tale of woe about whatever's going on in the town, ask them what word you live in. We are all accessible. We represent you all. The fact that we had to run an award system was really just a confine of the construct that we had in place up to that we're proposing or we are going to dissolve in a minute. So. Continue to advance your concerns. If you resonate with one counselor, a couple of counselors and a couple you don't get along with, then get a hold of the ones that you do. And and do that and continue to do that. And there there is none of this, well, you're in this ward, you need to talk to them. None of us do that to you. And it's really important in a couple of years when you're going to send the next crew in here. Or rinse and repeat, whatever you choose to do, that you pick people that are of that mind and make sure you ask them. You know? Like the words are irrelevant then, but ask them, how accessible are they going to be? Are they just going to tell you what, you know, be accessible up to election night? And after that, they stop answering the phone and ignoring emails. And I don't think we have a group like that in office. Is there the potential for that to be abused? Sure. But I would argue you need to get a lot more people out to vote than we currently have, which is just, you know, like, it's not just Midland, it's everywhere. But please, please, please take advantage of the fact that you're going to be able to look at this lengthy list of 20 something, maybe even 30 something candidates. And no longer have to just like skip through on the P V. And no longer have to just like skip through on the PVR when they're talking because you can't vote for them anyway. You get your choice and that choice, I think, is something that's been denied of you and you now have it, or you will in a few minutes. And hopefully we're making the right decision and that any of the fears that are being expressed by people will don't come true. I know I'll work hard to to make sure they don't in what little control I have.
I'm sure we all will. Thank you for that, councillor. So with that, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Deputy Mayor or Mayor Strathairn?
Yes.
This is for clarification. It's actually bylaw twenty twenty sixty for the encroachment agreement, just clarification. I I realize it says twenty fifty nine. Twenty twenty. Yes.
Thank you very much. With that noted, all in favor again? Thank you. That council that carries. I then have a by, sorry, a motion moved by councillor McGinn and seconded by councillor Gordon. That bylaw twenty twenty dash six one, being a bylaw to adopt proceedings of the regular council meeting with closed session held October twenty one, twenty twenty. Be passed and enacted. All in favor? Thank you. That carries. And just before I do the adjournment. Councillor, again, you may want to bring that computer in just to see what's going on. If it's. Something with your machine or maybe it's a user thing, but we'll get to the bottom of it one way or the other. Thank you very much. And with that. The motion of the evening moved by councillor Maine, seconded by councillor Oshewski, that this regular meeting of council with closed session. Adjourn at eight fifty two PM. All in favor? I knew that would carry. Thank you. Be well, stay safe.